Hi, welcome everyone to our first meeting of 2022 on January 12th. I'd like to get the meeting started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Just give it a little bit of time for the flag to come up because I'm not sure if everybody has one at their home and we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. I would like to just lead off this meeting before we get started into the public comment and arrest and the rest of the meeting with just a brief notes as a result, you know, on my thoughts and the events that happened last week of January 6th. All right, so I would like to go on record condemning the attack on our nation's Capitol on January 6th. I mourn the lives lost, including that of Capitol Police Officer who was just doing his job, and I support those who defended the Capitol and our democracy from this attack. An important line has been crossed by those, including some elected officials, who have falsely questioned the results of an election and spread lies and mistrust which led to the violent attack on the heart of our democracy. Our own Congressman Antonio Delgado was inside that building. We thank him and all the other elected representatives who refused to let the mob stop them from certifying the results of this election. The ongoing investigations must uncover all of those responsible and they must be held accountable. Lies corrupt our democracy. The truth matters. Decency matters. And as public servants, we must honor the oath that we have all taken. For the sake of our democracy, we cannot let the events of January 6th, 2021 go without consequences, and it should not define you or me or our country. So, thank you very much. Okay. Martina, can we go into public comment? And those who wanted to be, Martina, our village clerk will recognize you. Please raise your hand if you want to make a public comment. She will then unmute you and put you in to make your comment.
I have not received anything via email. Pat or Kathy, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. My question is, I see that on the agenda tonight is a discussion about the performance bond, and I guess I'm just wondering whether the public will have an opportunity to participate at that point in time or not.
I don't, I don't see why not, Pat. If we, if somebody has a direct question in regard to that.
Okay, I just didn't know what the issue was, but I do would probably have an opinion, and I just didn't know whether I'd be able to jump in at that point, so.
But you could also state your opinion now if you like.
Well, I don't know what, what, what position you're taking.
All right.
So, can I wait?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Just remember to raise your hand.
Okay. County legislator.
Hi, it's Brennan. Happy New Year. Gary, thank you for those words. And not to turn this into a roundtable on the events of last week, but of course, it's important for you all to know that I have also gone on the record condemning the events in the Capitol and the elected officials who, who potentially incited them. I actually have gone a little step further and called on elected officials in the county who continue to refuse to denounce the actions of the President to resign. Just so everyone knows that, that I do have a strong response to that. As Gary said, heartbreaking and upsetting. But let me give you my report in the meantime, please.
Hey Brennan, we're still in the public comment section. You were next on the agenda.
Oh!
Could you wait until we get through public comment, please?
That would be a really good thing for me to do, Gary. Yes, I will mute myself.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
And Martina, we do not have anybody who emailed in, correct?
No, we don't.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is an update from our county legislator Brennan Kearney.
Ooh, I get more time to speak. No, you all know, I don't, I don't like to take up your time. I wanted to update you that I was one of eight legislators who was a no vote on the 2021 county budget specifically because of cuts to key services, most importantly in the area of health and human services. We are being asked in 2021 to operate with 31 fewer jobs in the Health Department. Some of this is due to voluntary departure by employees, and some of it is due to privatization of some of the functions of the stabilization center, which I'm also opposed to. But I just wanted to let you know that I am still standing up and looking out for those experiencing mental health and/or addiction crises in the midst of this pandemic. No time have we had greater need, and we're sort of falling flat in responding to that for our constituency, for, for all of the members of the county. So, I'm continuing to speak out on that. I'm continuing to question the decisions being made there, and I'm still continuing to advocate walk-in services, which have been unavailable for quite a long time at this point. Also supported a move to freeze legislators' salaries in 2021. A lot of, most Duchess County employees have frozen salaries at 2020 levels except elected officials, and I supported a resolution or to freeze our salaries. That was set aside, but hoping that in January, this January, right now, we'll see that happening. I think that's an important stance to take as an elected official when other people in the county are being asked to make sacrifices. And then just two more directly local things. Slate Quarry Road, a county road that many of us don't enjoy driving on, although it's quite beautiful. I've worked really hard with local residents and the county to find solutions to its hazards. So, I'm pleased to report that the Duchess County Department of Public Works recently resurfaced two and a half miles of Slate Quarry Road. You may have noticed it's with new high friction asphalt, and so it stretches from Zipfield Road to Center Road. That's Clinton really, but we're all on there often. And it should address some of the accidents, hopefully reduce the number of accidents we're experiencing there. Also, new high reflectivity signage will be, is being installed to improve driver awareness while they're there. And at my request, the Duchess County Sheriff's Office also increased their patrols, and I am hoping to receive an update from them shortly. I try to touch base every couple of weeks about how that's going, but as we know, an increased police presence certainly discourages speeding, which is another cause of accidents. So, that was a big one. We've been working on that a long, long time, and hopefully that will really improve the safety for all of us traveling on Slate Quarry. And finally, to sort of hopefully, at least in a small way, back up the work that you all do as board members and that the town does as well with Elizabeth Benzey and Gary, our mayor, being leaders in this in the county. I prepared a letter which received bipartisan support with the exception of one legislator asking the Secretary of State to request assistance from the New York State, excuse me, I'm doubling up on myself, to ask the Department of State to develop a regional riverfront access plan. And this is to, again, counteract steps that Amtrak continues to take to introduce fencing along the river and hopefully continues the good work of our mayor and you, the board, in protecting our access to the river. If there's ever anything further that I can do at the county level, please, please let me know, and I will happily do so. So, those are the, those are the main things I wanted to let you know. Please, if you haven't already done so, subscribe to the Duchess Voice at DuchessVoice.com. I'm editing that newsletter comes out about once a month and hopefully connects you more with things that are going on in the county legislature. And Trustee Lewit, I see you have your hand up.
I do. Brennan, I was a little troubled and concerned by one thing that you said in terms of mental health services in the county, because with the mayor, I've been working on the Police Reform Commission, and one thing that comes up time and time and time again is to be able to have a non judicial, you know, have, have a place where people who are in mental crisis, they can go and also to have additional personnel to respond to mental health crisis, so we don't have to send a policeman or something like that. And I might understand that they are cutting these services because we had been told a while ago that they were going to be increasing the services.
Well, it's a matter of some debate, and you know, the answer that, that is often given when this point is raised by people who see it the way I do is that the privatization of the stabilization center, although we've cut jobs, will now lead to an increase in responsiveness. I have deep concerns about that, and I have been absolutely horrified by the lack of access to the stabilization center during the pandemic. It is certainly my hope that that will be true, because I agree with you that one of the most, I think, I mean, I'm not an expert, but one of the most important tools we can give our, our police departments is help with those experiencing a mental health crisis. I 100% agree with you. Would you like me to look into it and, and send a report back to you all by email about what I currently know and perhaps what the relationship of the stabilization center to the sheriff and local police municipalities? Would that be helpful?
Brennan, Rick, can I interrupt here just a second because I want to make a distinction here. There's the Mental Health Intervention Center, and then there's also the Mobile Mental Health Response Team, Mobile Health, Mental Health Crisis Response Team. What we have been told is the mobile units are going to be expanding because originally it was difficult to get response up here in the northern part of the county, and we've been told that that part is expanding. What we don't.
That's an important distinction.
Yes. So, I just want to be clear on what we've been told in terms of the mental health crisis for the mobile.
So, my comments were specifically addressing a lack of services available to people right now at the stabilization center, and that was why I voted to oppose the budget. But I do not know the answer to what is going on with mobile units. Have they provided a date at all?
I'd have to go back through all our notes from the county.
No, 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 don't, don't, no, 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 don't do that. Why don't I reach out and just sort of, let's get us an update? I mean, especially since, you know, it's coming up here in the meeting. I'd be happy to do that because I think, I think that might be something terrific that, that the county is, 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 it sounds like is ready to assist with, but, but I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I think, Gary, there's also a concern, at least among our, our police, that if the stabilization center isn't open, then they have to travel a long way to a hospital, and so we really need to have those services open, you know, 18 hours a day so that we don't have to take an officer out of town and send him basically out of the county to, to help somebody in mental distress.
I think, I think that's a really valid point. I mean, that just, you know, is another, another reason why our lack of an open stabilization center is just unacceptable right now. It, it boggles the mind. I, I don't understand. We've been able to get other things up and running, and we are failing, in my opinion, the most vulnerable among us, and it sounds like we may not be, as a result, offering appropriate response to the officers who are tasked with keeping us safe and keeping those in a mental health crisis safe. You know, the police are a really important link in assisting people in trouble. So, yeah, I mean, I, what can I say except that I, I agree with that concern? I mean, I just, I, I've been, I've been, you know, pounding, pounding at this in the legislature because I'm so upset about it. I think that we are letting down the most at need among us. So, but I will be happy to inquire about the mobile units, but yes, Rick, what you're pointing out is true. If we don't have a stabilization center open to take them, then we don't, you know, we don't always know where they're going to be received and how far that's going to take a policeman out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, Brennan, I, I'm going to intercept here a little bit too, because we do, and we then, if the stabilization center isn't open, we go to the Mid Hudson Regional Hospital.
And are they always able to receive?
Yes, so that's our next point of entry at the Mid Hudson Regional Hospital, and that's been, that's a dedicated psychiatric center where all of the response units in the county go to as well.
Well, that's good to hear, because of course, what your everyday person trying to get entry for a mental health service who is not able to do so at the stabilization center can't expect acceptance and, and may end up going much further abroad to receive those services. So, that's reassuring to hear.
But this doesn't circumvent the need for having a stabilization center.
It does not.
Okay.
It does not. We can't, listen, we can't, basically, we probably can't offer enough services. You know, we, we couldn't offer too many, I would hazard a guess, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Brennan? All right, thank you, Brennan. I think you, you said you have another meeting to go to.
I, that's what I was going to say, forgive me for disappearing, but I'm gonna hop on with the Veterans Affairs Committee. My work with that committee continues, so thanks for having me at the start of your meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is a new event that just really came to our attention, I believe in the last week or so, and it's the Green Infrastructure Grant Opportunity. And I know that both Vanessa and Rick have been working with Ty and Bond, and just so you guys know, Brandy is on the call if there's any questions or anything as well for that, but could one of you take the lead on what's going on with this grant?
Sure. So, Brandy let us know there's an opportunity to apply for a grant, which would be a 75% of the cost to construct a green infrastructure project, and that would be due February 12th. So, it's a, it's a tight turnaround. So, Rick and Brandy and I got together and we discussed a couple sites, but we really focused in on the stretch of South Parsonage from Park, past the Lions Mini Park, and then up past through the flashing light over the Landsman Kill and up to the flashing light and onto the next block of North Parsonage. And so, what we're proposing is a redo of stormwater drainage there because there is stormwater that is spouting directly into Landsman Kill, which is pretty bad. So, it would be green infrastructure to treat that, that runoff before it enters the Landsman Kill and into the watershed. And it would also be a nice demonstration area because that is such a public space with the park there. And in addition to the stormwater treatment, we would also be able to redesign sidewalks and bicycling along there. That's such an important route when it comes to children going to the school, for dog walkers, strolling through the village. And so, it's an exciting opportunity. The process is for Brandy to do a feasibility study that would be, that would be something that she would submit on our behalf as part of the grant proposal. So, what we're bringing tonight is a discussion about, do we want to do this feasibility study, which is of a cost of $6,500, and submit for this, for this grant in February? Rick, do you have anything else you want to add, or Brandy?
Um, I just think it's, it's both as a demonstration project, it's a terrific, high visibility place. This is something that will help keep the Landsman Kill and Crystal Lake clean, prevent sediment from running in, and that stretch of Parsonage Street really could use a lot of improvement. It's one of the main arteries for kids to get to and from the high school. We see people all, all the time, so I'll keep it short. That's, that would be my chat in.
Yeah, another aspect that I think is important, that we discussed that, that intersection with the flashing light and then to the north of North Parsonage, just the one-way block of North Parsonage, right? And that intersection is tricky, safety-wise, and so this project gives us a chance to do a little bit of a redesign with that intersection to improve visibility and safety. That's another aspect.
Vanessa and Rick, I have a question, and that, my question is on the bridge over the Landsman Kill. We in the village do not have responsibility for that bridge. That is the responsibility of the town, because all bridges are under town maintenance or whatever, for whatever reason, even though they're in the village. So, how do we, that bridge is an important part of that sidewalk and infrastructure there where the drainage is. Do we have to have a collaboration with the town to be able to do this?
My short answer is, I don't know. You know.
Brandy, would you be able to speak to whether we would actually be impinging upon the bridge itself at all, or is it more about the drainage and the infrastructure that goes kind of under the bridge?
Yes, so, the, that's good, that's good information, Gary. I was not aware that that bridge is the jurisdiction of the town, so I think it would be helpful to reach out to the town as far as a letter of support, because work may conceptually impinge upon the abutments. The drainage right now penetrates through those abutments and, at least in one instance, on the upstream side. So, that would be helpful if it was a collaborative effort. As far as conceptually improvements, I don't think there'd be any improvements proposed to the bridge itself. It would primarily be the block lengths between North Park and the bridge, between the bridge and South Street and between South Street and North Parsonage. And wanting to, in the feasibility study, look at it in those three phases so that we had some flexibility in looking at construction costs so that we could potentially tailor this to a scope of project that works for the village.
And then my second question is, we don't, we don't have a sizing right now, so we don't know what our obligation of the 25% would be. At what point would we have a, be able to get together and vote on this? I mean, we can't, the grant had, had to go in by the 12th. The application goes in, but when is the final grant awarded? And what is our timeline for approving the 25%?
So, we would want you to approve the 25% before the application is submitted on the 12th of February, which is a Friday. Your next meeting in February, assuming it is traditionally a second Tuesday, would be the 9th of February.
Yeah.
So, at that point in time, we'd be able to present the concept budget, concept plan budget to the village, look at the phasing, and decide if you guys want to submit the application. As far as the timing on the grant award, typically, the state has been taking around six months to work through their review process and do awards. With COVID, I'm not sure what the schedule is going to be. There is actually a webinar tomorrow morning that I'll be attending where that is among the questions I would like to ask.
Sorry, I think I might have misunderstood something. Hi, it's Lydia. Our, is, is the grant that we're applying for, for 75% of Brandy's fee or 75% of the entire project?
75% of the entire project.
Got it. So, today we're reviewing, we're, we're potentially approving Brandy's fee, and then in February, we would need to improve 25% of the project, which is what Brandy's going to figure out between now and then.
Exactly.
It's really Brandy's fee to do a scope of, of services, and when it comes to the actual, they're not going to do the actual in and out engineering. It's really, this is really a feasibility study first.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it'll be plenty more, yeah.
Good question. Could the 6,500 then be wrapped into the grant application?
It cannot be wrapped into the grant application. It's, as the state puts it, it's the skin that the village puts in as part of the application preparation. What it does, though, is the, this is funded through EFC, and what the feasibility study does is it provides a scope of project, a concept design for a project, concept level plans for the project and budgets, so that you have an idea of the scope and scale of the project, and from there, the village then would make a final decision on applying for the grant, be it, you know, the full scope of the project or some sub-phase of it.
So, this is not 75% grant for the 6,500 bucks, so we're not talking about $1,600 here, right?
That's correct, Brent. The, the grant is for design and construction of the final project, to actually design, to final design, bid, and construct the green infrastructure project.
Our commitment tonight is for 6,500.
That's correct.
The other thing we discussed was perhaps part of that 25% skin that we'll have in the game if we move forward and receive a grant could be services through our highway department, labor. So, it doesn't have to be entirely cash.
Right, so the match portion can be in-kind services, other grant funds, or, or cash.
But tonight, it's definitely $6,500. Okay, in, in, in anybody's view, Rick or Vanessa or Gary, I mean, is, is this kind of work? I mean, I, I understand that we are trying to prioritize environmental projects, making sure that we're not dumping a whole bunch of garbage water into the kill, for lack of a better way to describe it, but would you consider this to be necessary for the, at the moment? Other, other than as like an example of what we can start doing with these environmental kind of cleanup projects?
Let me, can I jump in first? I will say that the sidewalk, I think, is a necessary, and it's been identified in our sidewalk planning ever since the beginning of the sidewalk study as a necessary connector to be, to be done.
Yeah, and, and speaking to water quality in our watershed and the Landsman Kill, you know, we've been, we've been talking about improving our impact on the watershed for decades. I was actually just revisiting the 1993 master plan, and it says to, to do our best to lessen the impact of pollution and runoff into the Landsman Kill, and this is, this is the spot, you know, and it's a spot that can also educate the public and private property owners who are also waterfront property owners in the importance. in the importance of this. So in, you know, is it, is it like an emergency right now? No, it's not an emergency, but I, I do think it's very, very important.
Got it. Karen, is this something that we can afford at the moment? The 6,500, I'm not even thinking about the 25%.
I believe so. However, this is the first I'm hearing about the, you know, this, the 6,500. But I do believe that we have that in contingency. If we needed to move something around, we would be able to, to do this, yes.
Right. Because I, I mean, the reason why I'm asking all these questions, and I don't mean to sort of downplay the importance of the project, but you know, with COVID and with sort of the frankly unrealized economics, economic costs of what has happened in our country. I'm, I'm nervous that next year's budget is going to be very, very, very tight. And, you know, any money that we don't have to spend this year can help go to support that next year. And so I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to balance, you know, balance that in my head. So, so that's where these questions are coming from.
So Lydia, just, we do have a side one balance that we've been holding on to as we could use instead of the contingency if we wanted to. So there's other places to be able to get funds to be able to support this. We have, I think, 40, almost 45,000 in our sidewalk budget already that could be applied towards the 25% or even the 6,500, which is in our, which is our capital plan.
I guess had a quick question. What is, is there a cost for the grant application? And who's preparing the grant application?
Do you want me to answer that? So Karen, are the cost in our task order that we submitted to the village this evening is for the feasibility study and the components of the grant application, which includes the smart growth assessment form, a SHIPO determination letter, working with you guys for an authorizing resolution once we know what the budget amount is going to be and working probably with you, Karen, on the SRF financing application.
Thanks, Brandy.
So like Lydia, I'm a little concerned about this. I mean, we, we haven't even started budget season yet and it's going to be kind of perhaps grim when we figure out, you know, with the COVID and all the things that have been happening with the state funding where we're at. The WEA grant was even closed this year, so that was also EFC. And I don't know how generous they're going to be with something like this either. I mean, this could just be, they could be parsimonious about this whole program. And then, then we've spent our 6,500.
You're concerned that they would pull the group?
No, I think they're going to be thrifty and then we're going to spend our $6,500 and this is going to be really difficult to fetch.
Brandy, to your point, in the, the timing and in the financial context, which I really do, I do appreciate the gravity of that. If we have the feasibility study in hands and then we see the budget and how much this project is actually going to cost and we kind of balk at that, can we punt on it for a year or two and reuse that feasibility study in a future cycle?
Yeah, you certainly could reuse the feasibility study. It would go on the shelf and you could pull it out at another time. You could certainly, you know, wait until the next CFA funding cycle. So this, this opportunity came out from EFC. It was two different opportunities. One for an engineering planning grant, which is typically for wastewater projects. One for green innovation grant program, which is stormwater features in your community. And it's outside of the normal consolidated funding act cycle, which is normally in May of each year after the state has its budget. And, you know, I think the, there isn't a lot of certainty around funding. So I did want to just bring this to your attention and make sure that you're not missing opportunities, but fully respect the, the concerns about budget and moving forward with difficult fiscal situation in the village.
So the funding that we're worried about from the state is definitely our CHIPS and our PAVE New York, which are dedicated towards roads, which would not impact this. And also then the AIM funding, which they said we were going to be given. They've already given an authorization letter that we're going to receive our AIM funding. So you know, the funding from the state, I agree, will be grim for the projects that we're going to be thinking about for using that money, that money for.
Gary, didn't CHIPS already go to about 80% of where they were at before?
Yeah, but that's dedicated to highway. So they're, that's CHIPS and PAVE New York.
And we can't do sidewalks with CHIPS?
No. Not to my knowledge, we can't.
Storm drains, yes.
Yeah.
Storm drains. Well, I think storm drains in connection with repaving. I don't think you can just do storm drains.
Yeah, I think you have to combine it, Rick.
Yeah.
If I may, just for budget planning, my estimation, Vanessa had asked me this question earlier and I didn't have an answer, but thinking about the normal state grant funding cycles, my estimation would be if the state accepts grant applications in February, it's going to take them six months or so. We're talking September or so before they make any awards. That means you've missed any construction season this year. You'd be looking at a 2022 construction season. So you may be into your next grant cycle by the time you get to construction. So I would think it'd be design in 2021 and, and construction in 2022.
I, I actually, I, I know upcoming, we have Karen's report and the six month checkup and such. And I'd like to have a clearer picture of where we are currently. I think you have said that, that some of the state and county sources of funding, we believe are going to be held constant, at least in two, for this upcoming year. So I'd like to get a snapshot of where, where we are. Maybe before we figure out whether this is a good expenditure or not.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that too.
All right. So why don't we delay the vote on this until we actually hear the treasurer's report? Okay?
It's a good idea.
So all right. So if anybody has any other questions, I'd like to move on and we'll come back to this.
Meg, I saw your hand up. You have to unmute yourself.
Yep. Now you're good.
Okay, so I know, I know, I know that these I know that these sites were something that has been in the works forever. A bicycle path also forever. I'm just curious to know what the mechanism of filtering the stormwater is going to be. The planting in that park was done a lot to hopefully them and filter water that came from the park into the Landsman Kill and also to hold those banks. So I'm curious to know what kind of infrastructure if, if Brandy knows would be used to filter that stormwater in addition to those methods.
Do you like?
Yeah.
Conceptually, Ms. Crawford, what we're looking at is what are called stormwater street trees. So there's street tree planter. There's a limited number of practices that are allowed under the green innovation grant program. The focus is stormwater management and what we discussed with the trustees in the field on Friday was that we would want to look at changing the roadway section to create a space to add stormwater practices adjacent to the roadway. And one practice that's very common and effective in managing stormwater and also addressing some of your concerns about traffic calming and creating spaces for pedestrian are stormwater street tree planters.
I understand that, but right now there are trees planted along all both those, you know, along that street and along the park and along the road.
So Meg, Meg, the current configuration of the storm, there are sewers along the street. And the current configuration is they dump directly into the Landsman. So I think what we're trying to do is intercept the water that would otherwise be flowing through culverts and over the bridge to both slow it down, to slow it down basically. So I don't think it's going to affect the water entry into the park as much. We're really, I don't know if you walk over the bridge, you know, there are just those grates there. Then if you look in the, along the abutments, there's several, several galvanized pipes and some older ones too, that just stick out and the drains just flush right into them. So that's the water that we're looking to intercept.
Yeah. And I think what, to Brandy's point, it would be through landscaping and, and through the use of plants. And, and to percolate them, the, the water through the earth rather than having it just shoot straight out from a culvert into the Landsman Kill. So it's a more nature, natural based solution.
Yeah, one pipe on the south side, I don't, does anyone even know where that comes from? Even during drought, it's like, it's got water coming out.
There's actually two, Brant, we took a close look at it and there's two, two on the southwest side that are shooting out right at the same spot, right into the.
Right, Grant, you're referring to, there's the upper one that's galvanized, that water's pouring out of at all times. Then much further down below at the level of the stream, there's another plastic pipe, one of those black plastic outflow pipes. Yeah. And so getting a camera into those and figuring out where stuff is going would be part of the.
Where, where it's coming from.
Yeah.
Okay, so in essence of time, I'd like to move on and then get to treasurer's report and then come back to this. All right?
Correct.
Okay. So Vanessa, you're still up for the procurement policy, Vanessa and Brant on the procurement policy resolution.
Oh, yeah. So this is something Brant and I have been working on for quite some time. And we are delighted to be able to present the board with an update to our procurement policy. And it's passed muster with our village attorney and as well as the resolution I'm presenting tonight. So what this, what this does is it, it redoes the thresholds as we discussed with Karen. And it also more clearly articulates that that the people with purchasing power will be designated at the annual organizational meeting, if not before. But that's, this will be reviewed yearly. And it also adds a sole source language that we needed. And I have put in there guidance for considerations for environmental impact of products. And so I'm, I'm really pleased with this. I think it's going to give a lot more decision, more clarity to decision-making. And it also gets us climate smart community points.
So Vanessa, what I'd like to do is if you would like to make a motion, then we'll get a second, then we'll go into discussion.
Okay. So to make a motion to pass the resolution adopting the procurement policy.
Second.
All right. Discussion.
Okay. So this is going to change our code. This is all, this is a, this is going into the, just to be clear, this is going into the code. This is not something that would be amended by resolution at a later date. It would be, this requires a public hearing and that cycle.
No. So what Rich was pointing out is that this, our procurement policy actually is not a code. It's a, it's a resolution.
Ah, it is, okay.
So this is more, you know, it, it can be changed more frequently perhaps. I mean, without, you know, being really cumbersome with the public hearing process.
Oh, good. Okay.
And that was part of the back and forth. We were going back and forth with Rich to really understand if this is the proper way to handle it. It is.
Right. Because it looks like it's written its amendments in the chapter 15 procurement policy.
Yeah, we did, we just added on stuff and we added some insertions with the existing stuff with the, for the new benchmarks and then some things I discovered that we wanted to add, like being, being able to, to buy things from other governmental agencies in the piggybacking setting rather than just the state and the county, you know, put it in specifically. So that was one thing that I added. And, and then we put the, the sole source stuff, which we needed, and then the environmental stuff that Vanessa originally put into this, et cetera.
So I'm, I'm a little confused. Right now this is written as section 15.
We'll still keep that.
I'm confused. This is a rewrite of our, of our code and would have to be passed as, as law, correct?
It's not a local law.
It's not a law, Rick.
It's in our code book, but it's not a local, it's not a code, it's not a law.
Oh, okay. There you go.
Okay. So that's confusing. Why something is a chapter, but not an actual law, but yeah, all right.
I feel my pain now because this is what we were going back and forth, talking ourselves in circles about for a few months.
I'm no, I'm glad, I'm glad that it, it is by resolution and that makes a lot of sense. I think it's the proper way to, it gives us more flexibility. It doesn't cost as much to update the law. It's a faster cycle. I think that is the way to go. It's just, I didn't realize that if it was in the code book, it was by resolution, not by law. I, that in a way it was written, I'm like, okay, this is going in the code book. It'll need a, you know, off due to public hearing or not. But no, okay, you're telling me not? Wonderful.
So this, the state law too, like the, you know, the enabling stuff and the requirements, it was never meant to blend together seamlessly. It was kind of, you know, you had the public bid stuff and then you had this 104B, which allows you to, it, it's for things that don't go to public bid. But then also if you put a requirement in there, it covers both. So it's just, it's, it's really kind of convoluted, but we did the best we could to make it blend together.
All right. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to call, I'm going to call, we have a, we have a motion and we have a second. I'm going to, I'm going to call for a vote by, by rule since we're doing it this way. So starting off the top, trustee Lewitt.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. So resolution passed for procurement policy. Okay. Thank you. Thank you both for all your.
Yay.
Nice lift. Yeah. Good. Nice job.
And thanks, Brant, for collaborating on it. I couldn't have done it without you.
Oh, thank you. You did a good job, so.
Okay. Next, next on the agenda is our fire truck performance bond. We did receive an email from Garrison, the Garrison Rescue Company. And it is only an email where they quoted a $2,900 fee for 100% coverage of a performance bond. There's really no other in-depth discussion from them on that. This is $2,900 will give us a 100% coverage on a performance. So I'd like to start off with a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the performance bond.
Second?
Second?
Yes.
Brant, okay. Discussion.
I mean, not, you know, I'm, I'm always a big fan of over insuring, but is there any reason to believe other than the, you know, very eloquent argument that Mr. Evans gave us last time? You know, why would we spend $3,000 to make sure that they follow through on their side of this? I mean, do we think they're going to go out of business? Is, is that sort of the purpose of this is to just make sure that they do what they say they're going to do? I feel like that's the point of a contract.
Yeah, Lydia, and I, my, my take on this is given this current time, when we're in, there's a lot of companies that, you know, let's just say the pump company decides to stop making the pump that we had ordered for this truck. Right? And so it's not the dependency on Garrison themselves. To me, it ensures us with all of those other vendors. Right? And so it's not the dependency on Garrison themselves, to me it ensures us with all of those other vendors to bring all these, all these pieces together which we don't have a control over. Now, does that mean we would not, let's just say that we don't do this and would Garrison stand behind it? I do think Garrison would stand behind it, but it would change that timeframe from 15 months to maybe 25 months, right? You know, till we go through all of that motion. And is it worth the risk? Right, of having that extended timeframe to get that one critical part that won't let the truck work? That's for 3,000 bucks. That, I'm giving you my opinion of it.
Yep. And does this $2,900 come out of, I don't know, like the fire department? I mean, does it come out of the overall cost of the truck so we can bond for it?
I think it would be prior to that because we're not even going to be bonding it and for another 15.
Yeah, we gotta, we have to pay the 2,900 down.
Yeah, it'll probably come out of the fire department.
Yeah.
I know, is Kyle okay with that? Kyle, are you here?
No, Kyle's not here. And I spoke, and I spoke to Kyle about, Kyle has confidence that they're going to be able to deliver. You know, just FYI, so.
Yeah, I think it's worth the, you know, I am concerned about the, the financial, you know, fitness of, of anybody with the supply chain interruptions, especially American companies and stuff because we don't have a virus thing down apparently. And it's worth it. I'd feel more comfortable with it and especially after listening to Pat, which I think, I hope he chimes in and tells us what his opinion is, but.
Pat, now's the time if you want to speak.
Well, I, I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that you're favorably considering it because I do think it makes sense. The biggest issue I had, and I have not reviewed the contract, so you talked about an advanced payment where you would pay, what was it, 290,000 in order to get some sort of a discount?
When the chassis is delivered, yeah.
That would be out of pocket and that was my concern really, that you might consider making an advanced payment without some sort of security. Now, again, I'm going to qualify this, I haven't reviewed the contract. But if you don't have to pay anything until delivery, you don't have a financial risk until you have to make payment and they've delivered, I'm assuming. If you, if you do not make an advance. So my biggest concern was the advanced payment risk, that you're out of pocket money without any security.
Yeah, and Pat, I'm not in favor of paying that 290,000 for the chassis ahead of time, which saves us 10,000 bucks down the road, right? And that's, and that's what that was. It was 290,000 to take 10,000 off the price.
Right.
And, and it only guaranteed us the chassis.
Right.
I did not think of that was worth it.
So in my opinion, again, I think that that seems to me like a pretty favorable, it's about one half of 1% is the way I calculated, it's a pretty favorable rate to spend that money in order to have performance security to, to, to be able to, to make sure that, that they're going to perform under the contract.
Yeah, I'm worried about the supply chain.
So that's my opinion, I, I'm, I, I think it's worth it.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
I'd sort of say, thanks Pat for bringing us, for bringing all of this forward. And really helping me understand and, and Brett too on that one. So thank you.
I was just repeating what he said.
All right, let's have, let's, again, vote by roll. Trustee Luit.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Trustee, Mayor Bassett, aye. All right, motion passed. So Karen, we'll work together on replying back to Garrison to get this done, okay?
Okay.
All right, next is the temporary appointments to building, planning and zoning. So last, we had us, we had a meeting and we went over the org chart and we identified three positions, three temporary positions that we needed to fill in order to keep our, really our building, planning and zoning department moving forward. And one of those, you know, if you remember the org chart, was a senior level building inspector. And we've identified and both Lydia and I have spoken to Ken McLaughlin, who is the senior building inspector for the town of La Grange, and Ken has agreed to take the position of build, what would be in, in civil service mode, be the building inspector, but he would also provide the oversight for this, for this organization. He would have working hours on Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And he would interface with Ryan on phone calls and interface with the zoning enforcement officer if we, we needed that right up for that work. So Ken had, Ken has agreed to it and he has requested a, I'm going to call it more like a stipend of $200 per week, which will cover his hours and his oversight and correspondence with the clerk and planning boards for $200 a week. Okay? I'm going to go through all three and then I'd like to make a vote on, and then go into this, make a motion and go into discussion. The second position was what we called the municipal code inspector. This is the guy that's doing, this is the person, shouldn't say guy, this is the person who's doing the field work that's going out and, you know, checking to make sure the foundation is done correctly, checking to make sure the studs are done or whatever, whatever that field inspector. And he would get guidance from the building inspector. Brian Conley, who is our current fire inspector and is a certified building inspector, has agreed to work for us for $28 an hour to fulfill this position as needed, you know, for the village of Reinbeck. The last position was the code enforcement officer. And, you know, this is the person then once if there's a code violation, this was the person that would then go out to the site, deliver the code violation and work directly with our building inspector on making sure whatever resolution has to be put in place or if indeed they have to go to court, would represent us in a court environment if it went that far. And the person that has offered to do this for us and has agreed is Michelle Turk, and Michelle is the current zoning enforcement officer for the town of Reinbeck. And what we discussed was to pay her at her current salary that she is being paid for the town of Reinbeck. They have, they haven't given me that workup yet. I've requested it, but I have not seen it. But I think it's only fair to pay her, that her, pay this person at their current rate. So this would complete our buildings, our building department, so to speak, building and planning and zoning department while we're in this temporary position to move forward, if we were to move forward and put these three people in, in, in those positions. So I'm going to make a motion to accept Ken McLaughlin as building inspector, Brian Conley as municipal code inspector and Michelle Turk as our code enforcement officer. Do I have a second?
I'll second that if I can get off of mute.
Okay, discussion.
Is, so Michelle would also be hourly as per needed or a regular number of hours per week or what?
So she would be as needed and paid hourly. So she would basically clock in, clock out. So we could have our hours. So yeah, it's not a, it's not a set fee. She gets paid for the hours she works. Under the direction of the building inspector.
We figured two to four hours for the McLaughlin role?
Well, right now he's figuring, he's figuring two office hours from Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 for having regular office hours. And then, and this would cover whatever other time he needs to do to interface with Ryan, interface with Michelle, you know, write, write memorandums to the planning board or zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
For $200 a week.
Sounds like a value, right? Lydia?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a good deal. Considering some of the other conversations we had, it is a very good value.
Okay.
Just one question, I mean, if some enormous project, I know there's, I don't think there's anything on the offing right now, pops up and suddenly his workload increases, what do we do about that or how does that, what, how, how does that get decided?
I think that's a good question, Rick. If something were of, of significant that could not be handled under this, then, I don't know, we'd have to wait to hear from, from. And figure it out.
Yeah. I mean, Rick, remember this is all temporary until we can, until we have the opportunity to come to a permanent solution on this, so.
No, I, I, I know, I, I understand, I just, I mean, in a way, this is an incredibly, he were, he's giving us an incredibly great offer. And I was a little more concerned for him actually, that suddenly something blows up and he's like, I'm working, you know, 15 hours a week, I'm suddenly for the village of Reinbeck. And that's not what I wanted to do or bargain for. It was, that was, that was just my concern that, and I'm looking for equity. I think people work hard, they should be paid for what they, for what they did.
Agreed there.
So basically the answer is we will negotiate in good faith when it, if it comes to that.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it on both sides.
Okay, it's a town bridge.
All right, any other, any other discussion? Having not, I'd like to do again, vote by roll. Trustee Luit.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. Opposed? I mean, Mayor, hold on a second. Aye, opposed? Now, having here none, we're move forward and we will reach out to these people and get them started. I will let you know that some of them are currently under illness and their start time will be also negotiated based on recovering from illness. Okay?
I just wanted to take a quick minute and thank Gary for all of your hard work on this and as quickly as it all tumbled out. The, you know, this is one of the busiest offices in the village and getting these, the right people in the, in the in, in the spots for the temporary positions has been a heavy load. So thank you, Gary, for all of your work on that.
No, I'd like to thank you, 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 we worked together on it, right? Okay, next, appointing highway working supervisor. We made, we, we posted this to the union, it's been past the 10 days, which the union has, and we have one application for the highway supervisor to replace the current position. And so that application is from Scott Min, who is currently the acting supervisor for the highway department. I would like to make a motion to appoint Scott Min as the highway work, highway working supervisor to the village of Reinbeck at the current pay scale for the current highway supervisor. And I forget what that is off the top of my head, Karen may be able to tell me, but.
29, 2914.
Thank you, 2914. And what is, what he's being currently paid at because he's getting out of title pay.
Correct.
So I, you know, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Scott Min at 2914 as highway foreman to our highway department.
2914 per hour.
Right.
Okay.
I thought that was assumed, Rick, but that's okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Aye.
I'm a fan, I'm a fan of this idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Scott, Scott, Scott's worked for a good long time for the village. He worked with Mike Wolf. This is really a great and natural step up. He's done a good job as acting foreman. And I think this is a, a good step forward for the, for the department.
He has a lot of institutional knowledge too and technical skills and et cetera, et cetera.
I should say, this will be effective, Karen, we should make this effective at the next pay date, correct? So I'd like to amend my motion to have it appointed but effective on the next pay date to just tell, so it lines up.
Okay.
Okay. Again, no more discussion. Trustee Luit.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. Okay. We will formally congratulate Scott on stepping over the line and taking on this responsibility, which by the way, he's been doing most of the year and doing a very, very fine job at. So, thank you. All right, so that moves, opens us up to the next discussion, which is the domino effect. We move a person up, it creates an MEO, it creates another open position. So that creates an MEO position for the highway, for the highway department.
Gary, what does MEO stand for?
Mechanic, um, equipment operator, something.
Motorized, I think.
Motorized equipment operator.
Okay.
And these, these positions are required to have a CDL. And so people who apply must either demonstrate that they can get the CDL, which in a very short period of time, or already have their CDL to be able to perform the duties of the motorized equipment operator. We cannot wait for months and months to have somebody become a motorized equipment operator. And we can't put them in a trainee position. They have to have that license. So I would like to make a motion that we open the highway MEO position to the union for the, for the 10 days as required by the union.
Do we have to?
Let's have a second, then we'll go into discussion.
Second.
Have a second.
Is that, would the salary commensurate with experience? Is that, or when do we make that decision? Won't get to say that.
That's a good point, Rick. I think yes, the salary would be commensurate like we do with all of the honor. Good point, commensurate with experience. So we would set the salary level.
So we're kind of, we're basically backfilling Scott, the Scott's old position, you know, so this is not John Romano's replacement, this is.
This is not John Romano's.
More like the old Scott position, you know what I'm saying, like.
Yeah, this is a domino, this is why I said, this is a domino effect of, you know, we had five people at the highway department. They've been running with, they've been running with four, which is one which is a temporary employee. This is to get them back up to where they were at need, they need be to be able to perform the duties of the highway, village highway department.
It's time to advertise.
Yeah, it's time to get going on this, I would think.
I know what Meg wants to say, she wants to know if somebody has some tree experience.
That's actually, that's actually a real, well, I mean, that's actually a very good idea, having, having someone having, having someone who is a trained arborist, you know, on our, on our crew, I think is a good idea.
And we do, we have Tom Johnson.
Oh, okay.
We already, we have that position. But that's, but that's not in, that's not in the civil service description, so we can't put that into the qualifications, sorry.
And I think, yeah, I think, and one thing Lydia, we do try to encourage is people to get continuing education. So if there's somebody who's really interested in doing more on the, the tree and the landscape side, and we're going to be pushing some of this harder, you know, we would encourage people who, you know, whoever at, at the department to learn more. And I do think because it is, because of the nature of the job, the, the CDL section of it is really the, the, I would say the most important part, but that's the part that, that gets used the most. So I think it's going to be hard to find an arborist.
Especially in the winter when we need to plow.
Yeah.
Plowing experience, plowing experience is a, is a design, but remember, this is only to our current union members, this is not an outside application. So we need to post it per union guidelines to make available to our union members to apply.
Do we have, are temps, do they, do any of them have the CDL or do all of them have the CDL?
Some do, but they're not in the union, so they can't apply until the, we exhaust the union opportunity. Okay. I'd like to, you know, again, take roll, vote by roll. Trustee Luit.
Aye.
Trustee Nunaker.
Aye.
Trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy.
Aye.
Mayor Bassett, aye. All right, Martina, we will post our MEO position to the union. Thank you. Okay, next, minutes approval. Okay, next, minutes approval. Minutes approval for twelve eight twenty. I make a motion to approve the minutes for December eighth twentieth meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to do this by raise of hand and aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed. I did all everybody's hand up, so that passed. Minutes approval for twelve twenty-one twenty. I like to make a motion to accept the minutes for twelve twenty-one twenty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I hope you got all chance to read them, as Martina's nailed the mouth view. All, all in favor? And aye, all right, so pass. Minutes approved. Now, for the star of the evening. Our treasurer, Karen McLaughlin.
Okay, I'll start with the treasurer's report for the period ending twelve thirty-one twenty. The tax collector's account ended the month with five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. The general fund ended the month with seventy-one thousand, eight fifty-seven, thirty-five. The water fund ended the month with two hundred and ninety-four thousand, six thirty, ninety-nine. And the sewer fund ended the month with six hundred and sixteen thousand, two fifty-seven, sixty-seven. I also wanted to just draw your attention to, or, to the capital accounts for parks and rec, as well as for the capital accounts for sidewalks, as you were having your discussion earlier about possibly applying for that grant. So in the parks and rec, there's forty-four thousand, six hundred dollars and eleven cents. And in the sidewalk capital account, there's forty-five thousand, six twenty-four, forty-one. Vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total eighty-five thousand, five sixty, ninety-one. In the sewer fu, or in the water fund, they total thirty-five thousand, nine thirty-four, thirty-five. In the sewer fund, thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-two cents. And the water main project, eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. And we had one bill in escrow in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. And, excuse me, an operating statement is provided for the revenue and expenditures through January thirteenth. The billing and adjustments for the water and wastewater will be presented at the next meeting. And we have no budget amendments for this month. The twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget, budget requests will be sent to the department heads and the department liaison meetings will be scheduled later this month. So that is it for my regular meeting, or for my regular report. And I will go on to my financial six-month report.
Karen, do we have, do we have to vote on any water or wastewater amendments?
No, not, not this month.
Okay, all right, and, thank you.
Okay, for the six-month checkup and COVID-19 financial considerations for 2021. First, the bigger picture, as we're nine months into the global COVID-19 pandemic. Local governments have had a hard road and they will have a hard road ahead in 2021. The New York will see a decline in tax revenue, representing a seventeen percent decline from the pre-COVID revenue projections. As well as New York State employee retirement system and the state police and fire retirement system will see a lower return on investments for those funds and higher contributions from municipal employers for 2021. And that will also go into 2022 as an increase as well. So what does all this mean to the village of Rhinebeck as we start our twenty-one, twenty-two season? We will need to monitor budgets more frequently and more carefully throughout the year, analyze trends, make changes, anticipate issues, and not be taken by surprise. Last year, the board adopted a fund balance policy. And this, with a solid, well-thought-out budget, will balance the effects on services, municipal staff, and taxpayers. So all this said, where are we now? This is the general, this is the general fund budget versus actual spent six months. The dark green target line is the budget and the light green is where we are now at the six-month period. All are relatively proportionate. The employee benefits is higher at this point because we just paid the annual payment for the New York State retirement. As so far as this year, we've had two employees retire, vacation buyouts, and changes in employment. The salary line items will need to be monitored closely, as well as supplies and services. So on the revenue side. The, this chart shows the revenue received at the six-month mark. Village taxes have been consistent with pre-COVID-19 as we are made whole in April by the county. Dutchess County sales mortgage tax have been reliable as the county has committed to their payments for this year and the village assessment remains stable. The fire contract for fire protection with the town is paid in February in one lump payment, which will be forthcoming. A slowdown in the court has reduced fines and fees. Planning, building, and zoning fees are up. And other revenue include cell tower rental, the cable franchise fee of approximately sixty thousand, which are also paid, which is also paid in a one lump payment, either February or the beginning of March. Interest earnings are down. For all revenue, we will need to monitor trends and observe over the next several months. Okay, the next page shows all funds. The blue is the budget. The orange is expended and the gray is the revenue. So overall, with reducing spending to essential items and services only, the general fund should be able to meet its expenditures. However, this will be an effort for each department to cut expenses where they can and for the board to closely monitor the budget. The water and wastewater funds are self-funded from user fees. As a very important infrastructure, it is important to monitor these budgets as well as keep vital maintenance, repair, replacement, and upkeep done regularly. So in conclusion, the more things change, the more the village of Rhinebeck will adapt to the changing landscape. What we won't change is our commitment to assist you, our residents, and to being dedicated to the betterment of our community. So that is my report. My graphs are based on the last six months. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. I found that report very helpful when you emailed it out earlier this week or last week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Karen, this is Gary. So typically around this time of year, we get a projection on, from Marshall and Sterling, on what our benefits costs will be going into the next year as well. I haven't seen it yet. Are you of any indication of where that will be?
I, I haven't seen that yet either, but as those start to roll in, I think we'll, we can start talking about that when we go into the budget.
Yeah. And another thing you, you didn't mention, but we've talked about it, and that's we know that the tax cap going into next year is going to be at one point three, one point three, one percent.
Correct.
Fixed right now, so. There's.
It's going to be tight.
But we've never, you know, just for the record, we've never used, we've never gone over the tax cap. Right, in the past four years, so we've been very frugal in our efforts to not do that. But if this is a year that it's going to be tight to, if you have to go over, and then, you know, this would be the year where it's going to be, there's not a lot to work with.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll need to take a look at our long-term debt schedule out over the next five to 10 years to see what's falling off of the schedule and, and what new debt we have coming on. So I think that'll be a part of our budget discussion as well.
And we just did a review of that last month when we agreed to purchase the truck. So we had an assessment of our, what was coming off and what we were going on, so that we were maintaining a balance there.
Karen, do you know, with the stock market being strong the way it has been surprisingly, why is the pension pool going to be more difficult? You, you, didn't you mention that our contributions are going to go up?
Yes.
Do you know the answer to that?
I do not. I do not. I don't have anything to do with the investments for the state retirement system.
But Karen, Karen, we do know, and we watch very closely our investments with New York class.
We do.
And if you look at that, I mean, it's great that there's still a positive return, but the return is, you gave me a number a while ago. It was like.
Point zero five four eight.
Yeah, it was like this, point zero six percent or something.
But the pension pool, they're, they're, they're in more, you know, aggressive vehicles than what we have in that. I mean, they're in the stock market and stuff with that. I don't, I, I, I just wonder why it's.
I mean, it sounds like maybe not, if the return is that low.
You know, they are.
I, I'm sure they're, that they also, you know, they probably have a percentage of treasury bonds as well. I'm sure that they're diversified, but I really don't know.
Yeah.
At that level, I don't know what they have.
Okay. So, so Karen, just in looking over the income section, basically, it looks like we're pretty much on track, except for the court, which had to shut down. And that's so, and we're looking at probably a loss of about forty thousand dollars revenue, maybe a little less by the time the, by the time the budget closes.
We typically lose forty-five thousand a year, so I, I'm projecting that in the court funds will be in the range between fifty, fifty-five thousand this year.
Right, I'm just looking at the income side. Where, where, where our income side is much lower, you know, than normal.
That's why I'm saying we're going to have a higher loss there.
Right.
You know, you're seeing like net loss.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking about revenue, revenue, income, income, income loss. But other than that, we seem to be pretty much on the, on the marks.
We are.
Yeah, no, I, I would like to congratulate all of the departments for doing a good job. I mean, we've been talking about this in our monthly staff, in our weekly staff meetings since the beginning. So I know that they've all been listening and, you know, making all the expenditures that we absolutely need to do. And, you know, when you all review the invoices, you get to see the net result of that. That I don't think you're seeing anything that's outside of the, the needed category right now being submitted for purchasing. But we can take other cuts. We can do other things if we see it going. We can actually put a moratorium in place if we need to. There's all sorts of tools that we have, and as Karen suggested, which is what's really important. We need to watch this closely now for the next six months to determine where we'll be.
Yeah, I think we still have a lot more winter to go and a lot more spring cleanup for the highway department. And we have paid out, so, you know, some vacation payouts and retirement. So, yeah, we really do need to, to keep an eye on the salary line items as well.
And we're not going to use that four-letter word to begin with S and ends in W, because that could be a high expense item. And for those of you know, that's called snow, right? And the less snow we have, the better, the better we are, you know? We've had a lot of overtime in the last couple of weeks. That happened with our cleanup after that major storm, you know, as well as the salting and the plowing. That it never fails, a storms always seem to hit on weekends. And so that's, that's become an expense for, that's, that's an expense.
And holiday weekends.
And holidays, yes.
Holiday weekends was very expensive.
Right.
Um, are we, now that we have a plan in place for the building and planning and zoning office, I mean, are we expecting that salary line to go over, Karen? Probably, because we're sort of doing double duty at the moment.
I believe so. I, I believe so, because we're still going to, we still have the.
Right.
The current want to pay, so.
Right. And we're, and we're, we're increasing, Lydia, we're, remember, we're increasing the clerks' hours. We're ten to three, so we will, we will submit that to the, the county for approval to add those additional hours, since, since the current clerk is a twenty-hour-per-week employee.
Right. He's moving up to thirty.
Yeah.
Lydia, if you want to, maybe we could sit down and go and kind of forecast it and just kind of look ahead and see what we think it's going to be, look like till May thirty-first.
That, that would be helpful, just to get an idea of kind of what, what, what sort of numbers we're talking about. And I know that revenue is up in that office, but, you know, that doesn't offset, you know, that's not one-to-one.
Right, right, yep.
Well, okay, thank you.
I mean, when the permit comes in for the hub, that'll be, you know, a good one, but we, we don't have many projects like that.
Right.
Or what is that project?
The hub, that's that new hotel right next to, not right next to, but right near the Amsterdam.
Okay.
Across from M and T, in that parking lot.
I mean, it's a good thing that John Fenton went through the trouble of raising all the, you know, not that we're fleecing people with the, but we were, we were put, he put us in line with what other municipalities are doing with permitting fees.
Yeah, John and, John and I did that over, a little over a year ago. We went through everything and, and brought them in line.
So my question, with all this being said, I don't think we're going to accept anything. So how do we feel that the, the money to do the grant proposal, the sixty-five hundred, now that we sort of see our picture? And Karen did say that there were two lines, which could accommodate, accommodate these. I'm just curious to know what people are thinking.
Yeah, so let's go back to the green infrastructure grant opportunity is what you're suggesting.
Correct.
Go back and pick up. So I think it'd be a little bit more formal. We had a lot of discussion. So, does anyone want to make a motion and then we can get a second and then formally go into discussion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, to expend sixty-five hundred dollars for the green infrastructure. That's the proper development, sorry.
Study, the feasibility study.
Feasibility study for sixty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I don't know if the general fund can handle it, to be perfectly blunt. You know, whether we decide to, to do it out of the sidewalk funds, which might be the most appropriate place for it, honestly, if we're looking into an extensive, you know, sidewalk project there. But from what I just saw, I'm not confident that this is a good use for the general fund at the moment.
Lydia, I would agree with you and I would all, and, but I, I do think that our sidewalk fund is there for this purpose.
Right.
And every year, when we go through the budget cycle, we put in another five thousand dollars or more into that fund. So what I'm telling you is, we're going to go into the budget cycle and anything that we would, if we were to use that capital fund, we're going to, if we use our normal planning process, we'll be replenishing that fund anyways.
Is that, is that, yeah, I actually, out of curiosity, just because I'm new, is that how those two funds are funded? It's just, you know, general fund transfer at the beginning of the budget year?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. And usually to a tune of sort of.
The end of the budget year.
I see what you're saying there. I see what you're saying there. So is it usually in the neighborhood of like five to ten thousand dollars per fund-ish? Okay.
Yeah. And we've been using that, you know, that what the purpose was for sidewalk development, like, whether it would be West Chestnut Street or whatever, that was money that we, that was earmarked to do. that was earmarked to do this kind of infrastructure.
That's great. That was very.
And just so you know, you know, our capital balances don't count into our fund balances. So that's kind of another reserve category there of additional monies. So it doesn't complete our fund balance.
So I, I, I am, I, I think I'm in favor of the expenditure. I understand the hesitancy. I do think the sidewalk fund is the place to take it from. And I think the other thing about it is that at least it puts us on a cycle. You know, we've learned that the grant game is difficult to play. And I think if we get something in and we're in the game, and if we don't get it this cycle, it gives us a document to work from next cycle. It starts the process. So it's not, um, it, it's, it's, it's money is sort of invested in, into the plan. And I think that that may be, um, that may be important because these things come up, we have to move quickly. Be nice to have, if we don't get it this, it'd be nice to have something, um, in the, in the file drawer that we can pull out, dust off, tidy up and, and send out again.
Yeah, and I do think that, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I, and I was also gonna say that I do think it's important that even, even though we're in a tight budget year and even though this year has been exceptional on a lot of levels. And not always in a good way. It's, uh, I think it's important to make sure that we continue on with the work of making sure our built environment is, 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 is the best that it can be as well as continuing the process of making sure that we are a greener community. And so it, you know, my only concern was general fund kind of questions. But I think having a plan like this in the works makes a great deal of sense for when we can get the money lined up in order to do it. And if we just stopped all of this, then we wouldn't be moving forward at all. I mean, that's my only thought there.
Brandy, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
So Brandy, I'm gonna ask you a hard question. And the hard question is, is the 6,500 negotiable?
It's really, really bare bones, Gary, to be perfectly frank. There's a lot of tasks in there to be completed. Um, and, you know, I, I, we could have a conversation. I talked with Vanessa and Rick about, you know, if there was a volunteer for completing the grant application. I mean, we could, if we could have someone else take on those tasks, we certainly could come down on this, on the cost.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a, we have a motion. We have a second. I'm gonna do a roll call, okay?
Do we wanna, should I make, uh, should my motion include the fact that it comes out of the sidewalk fund? Not sure if that was in the, um, in the original motion.
I think that would be good.
Okay. So, so for Martina, just, um, the motion should be amended such that this money is to be expended from the sidewalk fund.
Sidewalk capital fund.
Sidewalk capital fund.
Which I mentioned earlier, yep.
All right.
Okay, trustee Luit.
Hi.
Trustee Nunaker.
Uh, nay for now, I'm sorry.
All right, trustee Bertozzi.
Aye.
Trustee Slavy. You're muted.
Does that mean I, she's pointing out?
We can't hear you. Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Bassett, that's a yes. So we're, we're moving forward. Okay.
Sorry, I, I, my computer's not working. Um, I said yes.
Yeah. We red lips.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Um, and if I could just, um, I'll check in with Martina about making sure we're on the agenda for the February 9th meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Getting you, Brandy. Thank you.
Okay, now these, that's all the items that the board has to vote on. And next is the normal reporting process. So we will go through the reports, uh, for department reports. I'm gonna lead off with the police reports. Total number of incidents for the town is 18. Total number of incidents in the village, 83. Total number of tickets in the town is zero. Total number of tickets in the village, 25. Total arrests, zero. Total number of accidents was seven. Um, our police did help us with the highway department on the brush pickup and removal because it can be very dangerous out there as they're working, especially on the main thoroughfares. And, uh, providing the highway department and others with protection for the concrete barrier removal. They've been active in enforcing the snow ordinance, you know, which goes into effect on snowstorms. And they've also been given us help when we had to do snow removal. There is a complete list of all the tickets that were given, um, that is available on the cloud. If anybody would like to do that, they're at your disposal to review. That's it for the police department. Next is building, planning, and zoning. Lydia, do you have that or do you want me to?
I've got it. Yep.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so building, planning, and zoning took in, um, uh, $17,790 this month. Um, we took in a $5,000 performance bond. I'm not sure for which building. Um, so that 17 grand includes a $5,000 performance bond. And now that we have, um, people lined up, I'm sure that they will get busy again. So thank you all for that.
Rick, highway department.
Uh, no report. They've been working, but I have no report.
Brant, water department.
Sorry, sorry, there is a highway, uh, report. It was handed in when I was sick. I can actually read up off of it if you'd like.
Okay, thanks.
Leaf and brush cleanup were finished for the year. They prepared all of the trucks for snow plowing and everything is working properly. They replaced the two front tires of the JCB backhoe. Tom Johnson has been fogging the village offices. They installed the two-hour parking signs in front of Montgomery Row as well as the east side of Route 9. They plowed their first big snowstorm of the season and everything went smoothly, other than truck one breaking down twice. Um, they did their first removal, which also went smoothly. And they said thank you to Beth and Dan from the police department for help, as well as Dave and Brian from the wastewater department. They started installing missing speed limit signs throughout the village, and they put the brine tank into the back of truck seven.
Thanks, Martina.
Okay, all right, Brant, now we'll go to you, water department.
Uh, so two days after Christmas, there was a water main break on Lorraine Drive. I think Rick is very familiar with that, um, perhaps. Finally, they're gonna do the generate, Conways is gonna do the generator install at the, at the water reservoir, the water tank, uh, this week, later this week. They have the, the pad is already poured and they're just bringing it in. It's already poured. They're gonna bring it and set it. Um, then they're gonna do it all within a couple of weeks, hopefully. Uh, phase two Delaware engineering with the consolidation study. They say that it's very, very close to being completed, so I'll keep you posted on that. I'm confident that they'll be motivated to finish it because we're sitting on an invoice. Uh, and we're not approving it until they're, they're done. Sorry about that. Um, so with the wastewater department, should I go into wastewater?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, we, uh, we're continuing to have problems with the clog pump at Village Green. We had, we had, um, to get, um, Emmens Pump to lift it and clean it out again. So they're basically unable to really, you know, conduct operations of that building without being in violation. So what, we're, we're getting a quote from Emmens to upgrade the pump because if we get a bigger pump in there, uh, we're gonna, we can actually, you know, get the, the baby wipes, et cetera. It'll, it'll push it through and then we can process that stuff at the plant. We don't see any other outlet here. So we're trying to get this bid from Emmens Pump and then get a contribution from the Village Green for the pump upgrade. So I'll keep you posted on that. That's basically what I have.
Hey, Brant, do we have a date for starting construction on, uh, replacing the covering on the, on our filter building?
Um, I've been trying to, I just, actually, Brandy, do you know, I just, I just emailed, um, Aaron the other day to see when Rupp Brothers was gonna start because they have not been, um, in contact with, uh, Brian at the plant. Are you still there or? Oh, she.
Looks like she's left.
Yeah, I'm still waiting to hear from Aaron on that.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a, you know, if they're waiting to the end of January or, I'd like to get it done before the end of the fiscal year, you know?
Yeah.
And I thought they were gonna work in the winter, so I'm, 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 I have the request in to find out the status on that.
Okay. I'm just curious because I haven't heard anything and.
I haven't either. We haven't, we haven't either.
Okay. All right, is that it, Brant?
Yeah.
Okay. Vanessa, environmental.
You know, I thought I was listed under climate smart committee, so I'll just go then.
Okay, very good. All right, committee reports. Tree committee. Rick, I think you have a, a wealth of information here.
Indeed, um, the trees may be, um, in dormancy, but the tree commission is not. So there's several, uh, there's several items that I wanted to bring forward, some of which you can read about, some of which you will basically just hear about today. Um, so the first question is, the tree commission would like to ask or has asked the village board to increase the number of commissioners from five to seven. And the reason to do this is basically, um, the, this is a very hard-working group of people and they need more hands. Um, and so it was really the consensus of, um, or, or the consensus of the commission that, um, having a couple more appointees, people who are formerly, um, invested in, uh, helping the commission would be really helpful. Um, as you know, we're, Meg and Connie and the Talca and Walter and Tom are planning all the plantings, getting the trees, making sure the trees arrive, getting them distributed, getting all the materials distributed, getting all of the, um, uh, getting all the volunteers together, making sure they do a good job. And then there's all the other duties that come up monthly in terms of, um, uh, permit approvals and all that other kind of stuff. So this is a very active committee, uh, commission. They'd like to add a couple extra, um, a couple extra hands. Um, so this would, um, require a change. This is in village, in village code. So I would ask, um, Rich Olson to just tune up the code so we go from five to seven. But we'd have to have a public hearing and we'd have to, to pass it. So I just wanted to get a sense from the board if you guys were, uh, amenable to going ahead with expanding the tree commission.
Rick, I, Rick, one of the things I, you did mention, which I think is very important, is the management of our urban forest using the software.
Okay.
This, this, any, if we were to add people, they would take on the responsibility of maintaining our inventory. Is that correct?
It's gonna be done jointly. So this is still be, to be worked out because Ryan will be doing some of this because he's on the letter and the permit side and only he can do that. So, yes, we will have members who are using the, um, who are using, uh, Treekeeper. And I am too, but it's not gonna, um, there's gonna have to be interface with some of the professional, um, professional staff.
I, I, my point is I want somebody to own it. And I don't think Ryan's the person to own it. He may be putting some input, but I think the tree commission should be owning that program and be responsible for making sure that updates are being done.
Okay, well, we'll look for a 14-year-old who's really tech-sappy.
Probably help you out with that.
Yeah, I, I believe there's people that are qualified that need community service, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I've, I've actually been, and we'll get to it, but I've actually been using it. And, um, you, it's not super intuitive, but it, after you get a hang of it, it really starts coming together.
I mean, I'm worried that we're behind now already with trees that have been removed and it hasn't been updated.
Mm-hmm. No, there's definitely a backlog of things that, that need to come in, for sure. Um, the next, um, the next item.
Before you go on, I mean, you want consensus? We're not voting, but you want consensus from the board?
I would like, yes, I'd like to hear consensus from the board. I'd like to hear what the board thinks.
I mean, I think if you have a couple people, do you, do you have anybody in mind?
Meg can answer that.
Do you have anybody in mind?
You're on, yours, um, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
God bless. I hope this, I'm on my phone now instead of the computer because I was checked out about five times on the computer. So I hope this is gonna work. Anyway, um, there have been a couple of people that have been interested that have come to our board meetings just to see what we do. One is Eric Bohm, another is Mary, um, Burns. And, uh, you know, there may be others out there too, once we open it up. I don't know. Um, and they both helped in various tree plantings from time to time. Mary Burns is very interested in trying to get, um, the schools involved and helping to get more students involved. So, um, but, you know, obviously we can't go through any formal process until we have the ability to do so. So.
Right.
The pruning corps is another thing that we started this year. And it would be, you know, it would just be very helpful to have more hands on the board to help orchestrate and lead these. I, um, you know, I feel overwhelmed at times. And, and I think other board members do too, so. Tree board, yep.
Could I make a suggestion? Just, um, if we're gonna amend the code, would you wanna have it say at least seven members? So that you wouldn't have to go through this process of saying, why should go to eight?
Uh, that would be fine by me.
Or perhaps like five to nine and that way, you know, if you have a lot of interest in a few years, you can have nine. If you have less, then you can get down to five. A lot of, you know, a lot of boards are structured in that way.
Uh, either option works for me.
I can, I guess.
Comfortable with.
I mean, if you wanna go five to nine, if that's acceptable. And, you know, I've not seen that done other places, um, at least in municipal law. But if that's acceptable, it seems like a good idea. Um, it gives us some flexibility.
Sounds like a great question for the lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
Just so everybody knows, this is a formal commission by the village. So it's just, it's not a, you know, committee. It is a committee, but it's really a commission uh, as outlined in our code to, for the village of Rhinebeck.
Right. I just don't want to do anything that's gonna postpone this too much longer. It's been, it's been hanging on for a long time.
So, yeah, Rick, you should have it ready for next month, right?
Sure, yep. We'll be ready to go with this one.
Okay.
Which brings us to the next item on board. Um, so the tree commission has also, uh, requested the village board to add a requirement for a permit to plant a tree, um, on the village right of way. Um, and basically this is, we're talking about the area between, you know, adjacent to the road, uh, usually between the road and the sidewalk. And the reason why this has come up is because, um, frequently there are conflicting wires or other obstructions around, um, in these areas. And sometimes people plant the wrong tree. They plant a tree that's too big for the space. It's gonna heat the sidewalk. It's gonna run into the electric lines. Um, and so the tree commission would like a chance to help people select the proper tree for the space. Um, we have on, um, uh, up in our Ecode sections, the books about choosing and such like that. It is, it does add a little bit more, um, paperwork to, to everything, um, that we're doing. And I'm always a little bit concerned about that. But I think that the upside is that we should start avoiding some of the problems that we've been having in the past, which are tree wire conflicts and then Central Hudson, who's here, uh, common prunes and the trees get all mangled. This would be a way hopefully to, um, short-circuit that process so that the right tree is in the right place.
So Rick, if I could understand this, you're asking for people who want to plant in a right of way to get approval?
Correct. To get a permit and have, have, have an approved tree. Uh, basically, the. Uh, basically the sizing the tree properly and also, um, you know, there are other ones like salt exposure because you're next to the road. Some trees are sensitive to salt, some aren't. Um, it's a difficult planting site. Um, and so the tree commission really wants to have, really wants to have some input on it. And it's one that impacts the entire village.
We are, we already regulate the, um, removals and pruning in that, in those areas.
Correct.
That's correct.
No, that's just for street trees, not for, we don't, we don't regulate it for, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we regulate it for the right of way.
We, that is the right of way.
That is the right of way.
We do? Okay. So anything that's in the right of way is currently regulated anyway.
What's that?
So anything in the right of way is currently regulated?
That's correct.
For removals and pruning, yeah.
Right. And that would be for, for plantings.
For pointing to, yeah.
So if we already have it, why do we need this?
No, for removals.
We don't have it for planting.
Oh, only for the removal.
Right.
Only for removal and pruning.
Correct.
How do we, um, this comes down to how do we enforce this or how do we, uh, who, who's gonna watch and make sure? It's always, that's always the tough part.
So the language is already, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, uh, you know, it's kind of the same way we regulate it for the other. If we see a tree that's come down without our permission, or if we see a tree that's been pruned without our permission, there is penalties for that supposedly. How much they're enforced, I don't know, but there are. Um, you know, I'm going around the town. People in the tree commission are observant of what's happening on the streets. So I think we will notice if somebody has done it. I think it's important that the message gets out via you. You know, uh, Gary, maybe in one of your letters, uh, once it goes into effect and it should be, you know, just alerting people that the reason we're doing this is because, uh, we don't want people to, we love the idea that they wanna plant for us, but we don't want them to plant things that aren't gonna succeed or are gonna cause problems down the line.
And, you know, Meg, my only concern is since I've been here, I don't think we've ever penalized anybody for taking down a tree. Uh, because once it's down, it's down. And I don't know if we've ever given a penalty, which we've outlined. And.
Well, uh, I can't, I, you know, I'm not in favor of not penalizing when you say there is a penalty personally. And I can't force you to do it. I think it needs to be done.
I, no, I'm, I agree with you. My point is, we haven't had good enforcement, you know, existing, so if we can't enforce what we have, how can we enforce this? That's my only, that's my biggest concern.
Well, that's a concern and I think it's a concern you need to address.
Well, who's responsi-, well, I mean, to be, like, that's a little, I mean, you know, that's sort of just like about.
Well, I mean, it would be, it's, it would be the same as, you know, enforcing a zoning enforcement.
Yeah, we, we have a, we have a zoning enforcement officer to deal with zoning violations, but we don't have like a tree zoning enforcement officer to deal with tree violations. I mean, would that, are you suggesting that this should fall under the authority of the zoning enforcement officer?
Well, uh, the tree commission has no authority to do it.
Right.
Well, the tree.
Somebody, it has to be, I mean, we can say, we can notify somebody, but we cannot, we're not in the position to do it.
To serve them the fine, you mean that piece?
That's correct.
The way it's structured now is we, there is, you do need to seek a permit in, in the, in the, in the removal or pruning stuff. And then the village board approves it, but we seek your referral authority. And, and as a practical matter, we, we never, rarely, rarely go against what you guys say. Um, I mean, enforcement's another issue, but.
Well, I think having a bunch of regulations on the books that are, that have no plan around enforcement and, you know, are known to be unenforced is a waste of everybody's time and, you know, and the paper they're, they're written on. And so I think before we come up with more regulations, we need to figure out a way to feasibly and appropriately enforce the existing regulations.
But, I mean, as a practical matter, don't people usually just do this? Is, they get a permit? With this.
Brandon, I, I, I can list a hat, a dozen trees right off the top of my head that were taken down and nobody got a permit. And they've been reported and nothing's been done.
Right.
So is there a fee schedule? Like, do we know what the fines amounts? Are those dictated in the code?
We have fines in the building code, but not in this tree code.
Not, yeah.
Uh, in, in the, in the code, uh, yes, there is, um, um, not over $250 or 15 days in jail. Um,
Whoa.
It's a big, big tree. Um, and it is enforced by the building and zoning enforcement officer. He's the person who issues tickets. And, uh, um, it was along with the police and other, other modes.
So it is there and I think it's important that it's there, but I do think it needs to be enforced.
Right. And that's my point. Meg, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up is that we have not, we have not enforced this way it should be done. And if we're gonna add more, I want to make sure that we have an enforcement plan in place that gets used for both the planning, the removal, the pruning or whatever. We have an urban forest that we have to manage.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, so one of, one of the factors may be doing more outreach, um, to both homeowners and the landscapers in the area. So they know, they know what's, you know, what, what the village, what the village codes are. Um, and likewise, um, you know, reinforcing that the guys at, um, at Dave's, um, when somebody says I need to take down a tree and it's, and they go, oh, it's over here, you gotta go to get a village permit. Um, so there are really only, I should say, there's, there's some tree services that we see here, the predominant guys around here. Um, and we should talk to them when there is a tree, um, that isn't our purview, that, that somebody has to get a, somebody has to get a permit.
And then, Rick and Alfred would like to bring up, we, we send the highway guys out or the highway guys haven't sent out and they do pruning along the street with tree, street trees.
Yes, and that is, that is permitted, that is actually permitted.
Permitted in the law.
Uh, in the, in, in the law, if I'm just, I'm reading it over here. It's on, on X two on the screen here. So basically, uh, just gotta get to the right section here. We always have the authority if, um, there's an obstruction for a light, a street light, a stop sign, um, 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 visual, you know, visual obstruction. So we always have the right to do that and that's, and to make sure the sidewalk. So we do that. We don't need a permit to do that. That's just regular maintenance. Um, we also have, if there's an emergency, we have the authority to, to, um, to remove uh, limbs or trees if there's an emergency, which, which we've done at times.
Correct.
So we do, and the guys do usually go through in the spring and make sure that, um, the sidewalks and the stop signs are visible. Um, that's usually the two big ones that get, that people have to worry about.
So there's a whole section here, 106, that's six, that one, which addresses the planting of the trees.
106, one.
Yeah, planting locations especially should be, selection should be recommended by a tree commission and approved by the village board. Planting locations may include village property, private property within the villages right of way or private property up to 30 feet beyond the curb line of a public road. Consent for planting of a private property should be documented by the consent for tree planting and maintenance agreement signed by the property owner prior to planting on a form approved by the village attorney.
That's, that's the brow, that's covering the brow.
That's.
It doesn't say brow, it says right of way.
No, but that, but that part is, is the beyond the right of way, the 30 feet beyond the right of way.
Yeah, but Meg, it doesn't say that. It says, I agree with you, but it says property within the villages right of way or property up to 30 feet beyond. So it sounds like you already have the approved, we already have the rules in place to do this.
But Gary, that's, that's giving permission to the tree commission.
Commission, right.
To proactively plant. We're talking about a resident, a property owner of their own volition. Going, going rogue in the, in the right of way.
Yeah, I, I was confused like areas. I mean, it, it's not really clear, but it looks like that's like for the tree commission planting.
Yeah, that is only for the tree commission plantings.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not saying.
Yeah, and, and I, I think also before we start enforcing this, I think we need to do a really good communications rollout to the village because, I mean, speaking as a homeowner, the fact that I'm responsible for the trees in the right of way, but suddenly now I have to get permits to do anything to the trees in the right of way is, um, a baffling combination, to be.
Well, I, you know, this has been one and I think it's something that you, hopefully as a board will re-investigate, which is the homeowner's responsibility for paying for all the work that's done on the right of way trees, but still having to get a permit for them.
Right.
You know, that, that's, that's a country, that's something that needs to be worked out.
So we have to be careful about how we explain that to the, to the homeowners, because, um, and I, I, I honestly, I think that's a, that, that's a topic of conversation that's that, that we should have, frankly. I don't know if tonight is the night, but, um, because that is a complex path to be asking our homeowners to, to follow. You know, to make them financially and in all other respects responsible for those plantings. But then, you know, highly regulated by the village and, you know, I mean, I get it. Like, these are like really important pieces of, you know, the urban landscape, but, um, you know, homeowners tend not to see plants that way. They only tend to see buildings that way. So, um, we just need to be thoughtful about.
That's not entirely true, Lydia. There are a lot of people that see trees that way too. Not all of them, I agree with you, but.
Yeah, but I mean, like, there's gonna be enough that, you know, or, or people who just say like, listen, I'm good with trees. I don't understand why I need to go to the village to get approval for what I'm already good at doing, you know? Or I'm gonna hire Dave's, like, so like, we just need to be careful about how we approach this with, with the communication.
We're, we're really, we're not, we're not going into people's lawns. We're really talking about the space that's adjacent, it's in the right of way, adjacent to the, which is a difficult, difficult area. I mean, probably in the best of possible worlds, the tree would be planted somewhat back from there, even away from that.
Right, and we are going into people's lawns because the right of way goes into their lawn.
To, to, to some degree, but not that, not that.
Well, if you're in a plat- it's, if you're in a platted area, if you're on a, you, I cornered Kraminsky and asked him about this once. So the old, the old roads are the user roads and that will, that's like either the roadway or if you have a sidewalk, it would go to that line, you know, closest to the home on the inside of the sidewalk. But if you're in a platted subdivision like, like you and I are, Gary, then it, you're, you have to look at your survey, survey to find out. And my right of way goes like into the middle of my yard, basically. And even Platte Avenue is platted. It's actually a plat, uh, it's all surveyed out. It's not an, platted, platte is not a user road. So any subdivision that's newer than plat, that's including platte and newer than platte is probably a platted subdivision. So you have to look at a survey.
So Rick, I have a suggestion. Why don't you write something up that we can start reviewing?
Okay, I actually, um, I did.
And we can put it on the agenda, because I'm, you know, I mean, I think we have a lot of questions about the enforcement and the, the education and, you know, all of that that needs to be taken into account. And if we can get a draft of something that we could at least start commenting on, let's, let's try to move forward.
Okay, I do have, I do have a draft of the permit application and the associated materials. But if you're talking about the other sections, I can, um, I can start working that up.
What does the board think?
So Rick, do they have a copy of that draft? The other board members or not?
Yeah, it's in the cloud, but that's only for the permit.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
We should, yeah.
You're talking about discussion on who pays for trees and all of that?
No, I think we're talking about enforcement, how, how, how to make this, how to, how to turn the permit into reality.
Okay.
And, and including plantings for permitting approval.
Well, that part he has, I think, already drafted, but it's the part about enforcement that's not.
Yeah, I, I, I think by talking about the permitting, we're putting the cart a little before the horse. Um, I, I, I'd like to have a conversation about enforcement before we add a new permit process.
I think the one, one thing I would say about this is that, you know, we are in situations where people are coming before building, planning and zoning there, you know, especially as we're asking people to fix their sidewalks. Um, people are in and out of the office and it is a place to, uh, remind them that, um, that when you're planting in that particular area, you need to be, you need to take some extra care. I mean, I guess what.
And that's my proposal. Let's try to get a more definitive, a, a better, or not better, but a more descriptive plan in place so that then we can really hash it out.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
Okay, your next subject, Rick.
We're not done. We're not nearly done.
I said the next subject, Rick.
We're not nearly done. So, um, Central Hudson is back. Um, they are back in the town and the village and they are pruning trees, um, along, along their power lines. Um, so basically, first off, I wanted to get, like, people know that Central Hudson is, is out there. They're doing this work. They're gonna be here for a couple of months. I was, uh, Meg, um, had, uh, introduced herself to the, um, to the foreman. I got a chance to meet him this morning. They've got about 220 road miles that they have to, um, to cover. He said, we're gonna be here, um, into the spring. So you will see Central Hudson out there basically pruning a 10-foot clearance, uh, all around their wires. Now, there may be some trees out there that they're gonna look at and say, this tree is really a hazard tree. So they may be taking some trees down. Those trees are not covered by, um, our permits. They have the ability and right to do that, um, without us. Um, so people will see them going around. People see them going around. We also have a list of trees from the, uh, from Davy. Just wanna be clear that there's, we have our, our management plan is from the Davy company. And there's also Dave's Tree Service, two separate entities. Um, from Davy gave us a list of trees that they thought should be removed, um, uh, soon, sooner than later. Mostly diseased, dead or dying trees. Um, according to the, um, law, we have to basically notify all homeowners, um, that there's a tree. They have 60 days to, um, to, um, uh, to respond uh, and to, um, begin to mitigate, uh, the, the problem. So it's probably something that we should get started on. Some of these trees are, I, I went out and looked at them over the weekend. Um, a number of these trees are rotting, uh, from the, um, from the inside, you can see fungus and woodpecker holes and they're on their way to becoming hazards. So this is a group of trees that we need to address. It's not a group of trees, um, that, um, is likely to be taken care of by Central Hudson because they have a different set of criteria than we do. So that's just a notice. I wanted to put people out there and get some, some notice. And the last thing is that, um, uh, Meg, uh, has brought forth a pruning technique that, um, she would like to see done, uh, on the trees that are along East Market Street. Basically, there's a series of Old Norway maples, which are the wrong tree in the wrong place. Um, they've been pruned by Central Hudson into either this kind of sag horn formation or even worse, one, one limb hanging over the, um, hanging over the roadway or one limb hanging over, uh, the sidewalk. So Meg is proposing that these trees be pruned, uh, in a different way, basically, uh, a technique called pollarding, which is to tighten up the limbs so that the tree becomes more balanced and it forces the tree to put out, uh, fresh and additional shoots. Um, it would change the appearance of our trees, um, around here. Um, it's something, um, we can discuss, but that would be the, um, that would be a technique for dealing with these trees that right now are becoming a problem without removing them, but it would, would stay. are becoming a problem without removing them, but it would stave off having to remove the trees as they become more and more imbalanced, and I'm sure if you ever walked the sidewalk on the west side there, I mean, you look at those trees and they're like, they're not, every time Central Hudson comes through, it just gets worse and worse and worse, and it's only better till they, till they start falling. So Meg, do you want to talk about pollarding a little bit more?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I recommended this is it's late in the game to begin it, but for those trees on, particularly on Route 9 north of the intersection and East Market Street, where there are a lot of these Norway maples that are right underneath the utility wires and that get pruned very heavily, the centers of them get pruned very heavily every time Central Hudson comes through, and it encourages the limbs that are left, which are the lowest limbs, that go horizontal, and so those limbs are right over the sidewalks or the street, and as they become bigger and heavier, they become more and more, in greater chance of breaking and falling on either cars or people. But if they're not gonna be removing these trees, then I think the best, the best thing for us to do would be to cut those branches way back, and so that they're more in tune with the length of the branches that were cut by Central Hudson, which they will sucker back up, ending up about often five or six shoots out of the stub that's left. And so in the summertime, you know, it will create a more leafy canopy, albeit much shorter, than, you know, than it would otherwise, but it would also make for the trees being safer than they are now. And until these trees eventually die and are removed, and we can replace them with other trees that are more appropriately placed in the median, I think this is the, the safest way to go going forward with these, and I'm gonna call them maimed trees, because that's what they are at this point. So I don't know, I don't think Central Hudson's willing to do this service for us, so, but, you know, maybe it's something that once the trees are down low enough, if we had somebody in the highway department, you know, that was trained, they could do it, or maybe we could find out how much it would cost to do it, have a service to it, on those two major arteries where these, you know, the worst of these trees are, and that affect the most people. Pollarding is a technique that was used all the way back to Roman times, and it's, they used it back then for, you know, trees in restricted areas, they also used it because it encouraged sapling growth that they could cut off and feed to their animals every four years, that's not something I'm proposing now, but it's, it's used all over Europe, all the time, still.
So.
Hey, Meg, I actually saw this when I was in South Carolina last month, where they were pollarding many of the trees there, and it was a, the homeowners were doing it a lot to preserve their, you know, trees that were in, in the developments that I saw, so it was, seemed to be a very effective, a very effective process that was being used. My question is, I think we're too late to the game for this year, because if Central Hudson's here now, and they won't do it, how could we stop them from doing what they're doing?
Well, they're gonna do what they're gonna do anyway, Gary, I think all we can do would be to follow up afterward and cut those laterals that I'm talking about back.
I got you.
The ones they don't touch.
And at least let them take on the burden of some of it, and then we can kind of spend less money cleaning up the rest, is that, is that the idea?
Well, they're gonna take on the burden of some of it anyway, I, it would be lovely if they would be willing to cut the other limbs, but.
Do the whole thing.
Well, when we, Rick and I talked to them today, they said basically, you know, their charge is to clear their lines. So any, you know, they're not concerned about the limbs, they're not concerned about the limbs that may be even unsafe, that are going over our streets and sidewalks. It's the limbs that are going into their lines, or will be going into their lines that they're concerned about.
So Lydia, so you know, they have a prescribed and approved method by the Public Service Commission, which details out very explicitly what they can and cannot do. So what we're asking for them is, asking is to have them change their policy, which has been approved by, all the way up to the Public Service Commission, which I think would be next, next to impossible to get done.
Yep.
Although we would love it, and think it's a better, better choice, I don't think we could ever get it through the Public Service Commission.
Right.
Why don't we just do like a test pilot, do like five or 10 of these trees and see, see how they leaf out?
Yeah, we'd have to hire somebody to do it, Brent.
We don't, you don't think we could get the guys up there?
You'd need a bucket truck, right? Yeah, to do this effectively.
Yeah, I mean, we would need some of them, you know, are low enough that they can certainly get from the ground. That's the problem, you know, they're the lowest branches that are hanging out over the street and the sidewalk, and those they might not need a bucket truck for, but, yeah.
And the best time of year to do this is sort of February.
Dormance.
Best to do it before it leaves out, for sure.
Yeah.
So I have a question, I know, I know Meg, your time is, is, is difficult, do you think, I'm just picking up on what Brent said, do you think it's worth designating three or four trees to try this technique on, to see how, you know, maybe we can pick what we think are the worst trees and, and get a sense for how this is working? You know, instead of doing them all at once, but at least, at least trying, doing some trials, especially on the trees that, that are.
I mean, I think, again, we just have to find somebody that we can pay to do it, probably.
Well, we just need somebody to, I'm really talking about choosing, marking the trees that are gonna be, that we'd want to do it.
Right.
I, I also want to say that as we're kind of closing this, this brings us up to a point, this, this, the, we're dealing with something that's already baked into our, our village code, but it really seems to be a problem, and that is that we have a public good, the street trees, for which we have a lot of opinions and a lot of things that we want to do with, but we're basically forcing the homeowner, forcing every homeowner to shoulder all the costs of things that we're really asking to be for public goods. So I'm gonna throw it out there, we should, we should start thinking about ways that maybe the village should be starting to bear some of the cost, it's probably the worst thing to say at this COVID time, but the village used to pay 50% of a tree, a tree removal, there are some other ideas that we can put out there, but I'd like to put that seed out there, Lydia, you and I have talked about this.
You know, if, if I can jump in here, I support that, because I feel like there's gotta be a better way, it's confusing for everyone, it doesn't quite seem to be working the way it's structured now, and I would propose, maybe this would be an amazing project for one of our mayor's students in environmental policy, in environmental science, or Bard student, graduate student, because it's a really interesting topic of public good and costs and, and, and an intersection, of course, with the environment, so I, I think it's, it's a bit of a nut to crack, but maybe there's someone out there who would really like to dig in and show us that there maybe are some other ways to handle this.
Interesting to take a look around.
Well, and I mean, to, to that point, like, you know, sure, proposing something like this now financially is a terrible idea, but if it does take, you know, two or three years to create a sidewalk slash tree district, because of all of the hurdles that it takes to do that, you know, then taking the time to sort of begin thinking about that now puts us into a good spot in like 2025.
Right.
You know, just.
After you.
No, I mean, I was just gonna, like, you know, just like with that, the, the $6,500 that we chose to spend, I mean, we can't just stop all activities because, you know, the budget's coming crashing in on us, so you know, finding, I think that's a great idea, Vanessa, like, finding a graduate student or a college student who, you know, needs a thesis project that kind of think about this, I think is a, is a great idea.
There are, I did some, about a year ago, I did some research into this, and there are several municipalities that did establish sidewalk and tree districts, but they're cities, and they have the ability to do that, we as a village do not have the ability to establish those sorts of districts.
No? Like, not at all, so how do we?
Towns do, we don't.
We don't, yeah, no, Rick and I looked at this extensively, because we looked at the city of Ithaca, who modeled this, and actually then did a lot of discussion and a lot of interaction, and we can't create a sidewalk district.
Could we work with the town potentially to create a sidewalk district for, you know, they, they consider us their central business district, and so maybe this is a way to work with the town on that?
There's some potential, we can, you know, we can get into it. I, I know, and I'll also say this, I know that the state generally frowns on establishing special districts, they want to see fewer districts, like, you have to get state approval for them at a certain point, they want to see fewer districts, fewer administrative units, but it doesn't mean we can't try.
Right.
Or maybe there's some other financing mechanism, you know, public-private organization or something that could help offset some of the costs or cost share in some way, finance the expensive.
Yeah.
Of taking down a tree.
Yeah, I mean, just the idea of getting a creative, energetic college student or graduate student, sounds like a great way to start thinking through this project.
Sure.
Because, I mean, you're right, like, you know, his districts are sort of a pain in the ass, and, but, you know, this sort of homeowner slash government balancing act doesn't seem to be actually.
Work.
I would agree.
Successful.
All right, so you know what, we, we spent a good 45 minutes already on this, a half hour or so, so I think we, in the essence of time, I would like to make a motion that we move forward a little bit, we can beat this to death, and we, I think we have some work to do to be able to come back. You know, I too am in favor of managing our urban forest and, and working towards this, but I think, you know, we can sit here and debate this all night.
True.
All right, so in the essence of time, Rick, if you don't mind, I'd like to move forward.
We're done, no, no, we're done, but I am glad, I, I am glad that we at least have some discussion and are getting the ideas out here, because this is really important to do, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa. Yes, thanks, and Meg, thank you for all the work that you do. We could not. Yes.
You too.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye, Meg. Okay, so I won't go through my entire environmental and climate report, but I just, I, I wanted to mention one important piece, which is that, speaking of graduate students doing work for us, we had the final presentation of David Chernak, who was our Bard graduate student intern from the Center for Environmental Policy, and so we spent six months with him, his final presentation was attended by about 50 people, and it really was a great distillation of recommendations for the town and the village, for what sort of environmental policies should be under consideration. So I, and, and this issue came up, right, of looking at the comprehensive plans, the town is from 2009, the village is from 1993, and actually, I did, I spent some time recently reviewing the 1993 plan, it's really, it's good, it's really, really good.
It is good.
It's really good, and it's good, good bones, as they say, and I think with the 2020 census data coming out, maybe it's something we could start talking about, not right now, but revisiting the comp plan, updating it for the village. What I want to propose as, as, as a follow-on to David's presentation, is I want to propose to the board that I look into a process for creating a climate-focused addendum to the 1993 plan. And so what this would do would, would basically take, take the, the most current climate environmental policy from a 20 now, 2021 lens, and compile those into an addendum. And this is a way that we can have momentum coming off of David's project, speak to the village's desire to transition to renewables, to be more walkable, bikeable, sustainable, and, and make recommendations towards those goals, without necessarily right now opening the entire can of worms of, of doing a whole comp plan process for the village. Though, you know, 1993, it's getting a little dusty, I could use an update, so I wanted to get your, your take on that, if you'd be up for me doing a little bit of research to see what an addendum process might look like, and come back with a proposal for, you know, obviously, community engagement would be a piece of it, for example.
Sure, I think that sounds like a great idea.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, Vanessa, when we hired our engineering firm of Ty &amp; Bond.
Yeah.
One of the things that we did as part of that research was to make sure that they came forward with a proposal, and we evaluated them on coming forward with a bike, walkable, bikeable, sustainable proposal, and they presented that plan, and Ty &amp; Bond did an excellent job, so I'm gonna suggest also that, you know, as you do this research, you use them as part of the process.
Absolutely, that sounds great.
Also, Dutchess County Planning does this stuff, I mean, they, they assist people, I think they helped write the 93 master plan, and probably with Environmental Cornell Cooperative would.
Absolutely, and, and this is, just so everyone knows, adding an addendum with sustainability elements to your comprehensive plan is something that is part of the Climate Smart Program, so this is a recommended action. So there's some guidance provided there as well, they also link to some other communities who've done similar projects, so my plan would be in part my research to reach out to those other communities and see what their process looks like. Okay?
Yeah, Vanessa, I think you're getting a nod from everybody, this is a great idea.
Great, yeah, thank you.
And Vanessa, we should, I, I, I'm sorry, it's been, you know, a month, but we, we should talk about how zoning and planning sort of dovetails with all of that too, so make sure to keep me updated as you're going through this.
Great, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, the next subject is police reform, I want to give an update and, and Rick can add into it, one of the things the committee has been working on is a survey to send out to the public, and it would go out to as far as we could get it, which would include not only village residents, but people who work in the village, and well, as those who use the village, so town would be included, and we, and the school would be included in terms of getting the survey out, and we're at the final stage of completing that survey, and one of the things we talked about today, which is Rick and I, we're gonna propose to the committee, is that we're, we want to be able to send that survey out as soon as January 19th, and start getting results back on February 1st, because we are on a tight timeline now to finish by April 1st, and there's some key activities which we need to do, which is, if we're gonna undertake this survey, get the survey out, then we need to hold a series of forums, and then we gotta draft up our regulations and our policies, and then we gotta have public hearings, and we have to have this on the governor's desk by April 1st. So we, we put together a timeline to get there, and there's not, it's, it's tight, and we knew this was gonna be tight, but the goal is that between now and, between now and April 1st is to do the survey, do our community forums, do our public hearings, draft a code, get it reviewed, and get it on the governor's desk by April 1st. We had, I had a meeting with the county executive, all the mayors and supervisors, on Monday, we had a meeting with the county executive, and he was emphatic that we did, do not miss this date, right? Missing this date has severe financial implications on us, and we're talking about a time when we can't afford to lose any money, so April 1st is critical, that we need to meet today.
There's a penalty?
Yes, the penalty is we will lose our state funding, which will include our CHIPS money, our AIM money, or any of the above, is the penalty for not having this. which will include our CHIPS money, our AIM money, or any of the above is the penalty for not having this on the governor's desk by April 1st. So there's a lot of initiatives going on. One thing I know that I'll bring up since Vanessa's on, we're looking at revising the complaint form, uh, to make it more user-friendly. And we're, we're, Vanessa's doing a great job on our website to make all of this information available and that we can get it out. So there's a, we've done a lot of work, but now it's time to put where the rubber meets the road. We need now to put it down on paper and move forward and move this out. So I, the survey is great. Rick and Terry and, and Debbie did a great job on, on really drafting this survey up for us. And so I think that'll provide us a lot of input and it will be in parallel with our community, be good input for then our community forums as well as going on. And I just want to emphasize that given what's happening in our country right now and my remarks at the beginning of this meeting, there's just, you know, now's the time that we really need to focus on doing this. And I want to make sure that we move forward in a most expeditious, but in a right way to get this done. So that's the short of it. Rick, do you want to add anything?
I'd just say that we, we've had a couple of iterations. The survey has, has basically gone through the committee. That does include Sergeant Dunn. He's had a chance, uh, multiple times to give input, um, to, um, to help, to help shape the survey as well as everybody else. So we feel like it's, uh, really does, uh, a balanced job of getting to, uh, what the community is thinking and feeling. And we're going to hopefully use that information as we move forward into the future.
And we're going to make the survey available to all the members of our police department. We're not blindsiding, we do not want to blindside anybody on this. All right. But we don't see any reason for any objections, but it is an important communication vehicle that we're going to be sharing with them. All right. So that's it. We're going to move forward and we need to be on the governor's desk by April 1st. Okay.
All right. Wait, quick question. When, when is the first public forum?
So what we're going to, what we're going to propose to the committee tomorrow at our meeting, uh, we drafted up some dates. We're proposing February 8th for the, we're proposing three forums, one February 8th, one February 11th and one February 17th, morning, afternoon, evening. All right. For those, for those, for those public forums. We don't need to hold three. You can only need, you only have to hold one, but we want to try to, we thought it was important to, to cover times when, you know, when not everybody's available. Some people are available in the day, some people are available in the afternoon and some are available in the evening. So we're going to propose that to the committee tomorrow. And then March 9th, uh, just, you know, we want to propose the public hearing for our March 9th meeting, which will give us time then to wrap that up and complete the information to get to the governor.
Okay.
Okay. So that's my report for police reform. Moving on, personnel, January anniversaries. Uh, we don't have, I, well, we still have one guest, but Officer Beth Imperato, uh, is now 28 years with the village as a police officer. So congratulations, Beth. Uh, she's, she is also an SRO, Student Resource Officer. Just, and just does a great job for, for us. And thank you. So thank you, Beth. Correspondence is on file at the clerk's office. So that'll be there for any, for all public view. And at this time, I need to make a motion to go into an executive session to discuss, uh, employment of one of our village employees.
Second.
Okay. All right. Um, with that, we're going to give adieu to everybody who's still on the, um, thing. So bye Brenda.
Bye Brenda.
Talk to you tomorrow.
Bye, everybody.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the executive session. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our January, January 12th meeting at.
Second.
Since it's still January 12th?
Second, third, fourth, fifth.
You second, before, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. Everybody have a great evening. Thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, thank you. Bye.